Okay, welcome everyone. I am calling to order the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission Public Hearing at five oh two P M on Thursday, August twenty first, twenty twenty five. This is the August twenty twenty five hearing of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission. I am Mark Kiefer, the chairman, and I am joined this evening by Commissioner Vice Chair, the Commissioner Arian Allen, as well as, let's see, who else is here? At the moment Commissioner Steele, and we are also expecting Commissioners Finegold and Jackson. And we will let the record reflect when they join. Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the subsequent amendments thereto. We're conducting this meeting online, which is, they'll resume. To ensure public access to deliberations of the Beacon Architectural Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing again, otherwise on a Zoom. As you may have heard, or if you've just joined, the hearing is being recorded, so all further conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing is adjourned. At this point, we like to acknowledge any elected officials or members of the media who may be present. Let's just see. Not sure if I see any.
Mark, maybe just mention to raise their hand.
Yes, if you could just raise your hand on your Zoom panel, just so we could acknowledge you, members of the media or elected officials.
Not seeing any. I'll let you know if I see Dan.
Okay, and I see now that I believe Commissioner Finegold has joined. Yes, hi Mo, welcome. Let's see, members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, what you'll need to do is raise your hand, but using the button probably at the bottom of your Zoom panel. Nick will supply some handy instructions if you're not familiar with how to do that. We'll also give you the heads up as we adjudicate each application in turn or violation. We will have a designated time for public comment and we'll give you a heads up when we're going to do that. At that time, if you want to be heard on the record, you will need to raise your hand, quote unquote, using the button probably on the bottom of your Zoom panel, and then Nick will call on you and acknowledge you again. We'll give you a heads up when the time comes. I think that's it, so. Why don't we get started? We do have a few violations to hear at the beginning here before we get into design review. Sorry, no, we have a business item first. Sorry, thanks Nick for reminding me, which is the ratification. We've actually got two prior hearings, the June twenty twenty five and July twenty twenty five public hearings. So let me ask my colleagues, commissioners. Do you have any comments, edits, revisions? For either the June twenty twenty five or July twenty twenty five hearings? I was not here for June, so I'm going to abstain on that one, but does anyone have any revisions to that? Okay, hearing none. I will, let's just do these one at a time since I need to abstain from the June one. I'll move approval of the June twenty six, twenty twenty five hearing minutes of the Beacon Architectural Commission.
All right, Tomo.
Okay, is that a second Sandy? Okay, well, we will vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Finegold. Think you need to unmute. Mo.
Hi, I am going, I, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Kiefer abstains, Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, I'll now move approval of the July seventeenth, twenty twenty five public hearing minutes of Beacon Architectural Commission. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we will vote. I'm sorry, and again, just one more time, no revisions. Okay, we'll vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Mister Finegold.
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson is not here yet. Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, those meeting minutes are approved as well. So now we'll move on to violation review. First item is, I believe, seventy seven Charles. Is there a representative? It is seventy seven Charles, right?
Yes.
Representative from seventy seven Charles present?
I see Philippa, so I'm going to go ahead and unmute her.
Bye. I'm just waiting for Patrick to join, but I can't. I don't see him here and I am trying to get a hold of him. He would be the one to represent this. Is there any way to come back to this next or?
Looks like Philippa, looks like Bridget is in the waiting room. Would she be someone to speak to?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would get her to join and then.
Okay, let's, let's see, there she is right there. Hey Bridget.
I think Philippa is here. We've been. Waiting for Patrick, but I don't think he's here.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we were just talking about that. Philippa is here, but she was waiting for Patrick to come on board.
Okay, okay. I don't do not see him yet.
I don't see him.
Okay. All right, well, I think we can probably get started with Philippa and me.
Okay.
Okay, hi Bridget, please go ahead. We've got the plans up on the screen here, so you can probably see. So just to, can you, Bridget, can you just give us the briefest of recaps as just for our commission's benefit and the public as to why we're here and where we are?
I can go ahead.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Oh. Okay. So this is the work that was done on the store on the facade previously and our application seeks to change this back to something closer to what was there. And I think one of the objections of the commission was that the detailing was not correct. The, and the elements of the storefront were larger than they should be. So if you can show our proposed drawing.
Yeah. And Bridget, while we're doing that, I think Patrick's here, by the way. Just again, to quickly recap for the benefit of the commission, to remind everyone, no, I was just going to say that the, that there were other aspects that were previously approved, an extension of the signage, some lighting of the signage. And I think we are getting closer to a revised concept for the storefront, so please go ahead.
That's great. Patrick, do you want to take over?
Yeah, and I'm going to be very, I'm actually in Providence outside of the Providence train station. Kind of in a kind of a windswept place, but, but my colleague Philippa is, I think is going to be the one that is going to make sure that we have the appropriate documentation. But I think with what you have available there, Nick, I presume that you're there. You should have a, a, a design of what our proposal is as well as some historical sources that we use in design of the, of our re-renovation. Okay, that's beautiful. Okay, so that's probably the most relevant historical one right there. You can tell it's from the late nineteen fifties, but it is remarkably good in that it has the entire transom or virtually the entire one except for what's blocked by the sign, visible. And it's a very elegant one, I think, that has three lights vertically with a square and then a double square and then a square vertically. It has various other things that, okay, then. So let's say if we go to the another historical precedent, we will see something rather related, which is the which is from a subsequent year where there is more that is blocked. And if, if you could show that, that would be great.
This, this picture here, Patrick?
Well, this picture is great in that it, 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 it shows the, the facade on the right is, well, it, it actually, it, you can see that there is a transom. However, one can only see the top lights, but it's fairly evident that it's three lights high. It differs from our plan in a way, as far as we can tell, it looks as though it's essentially a continuous freeze of lights. And then the if we, if we look at the lower glass, what we see is corner windows, yeah, thank you, that have a a mullion at the, at the corner that's relatively slender. And that is, we strive, we strove, I guess I should say, to achieve that. And what you'll find in the existing situation is that the corner post is quite substantially larger. And that was something that in the, the original violation hearing, at which I was not present, I was not part of the project at all at that time. I was brought in by the owner, Julianne Kylie. Essentially, well, I think she was looking for a really nice design. She recognized that the project had gone through a very unfortunate process where there, it, 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 it snowballed from being a very, very minimal repair into being a very large one. And unfortunately, the city, the inspectional services, neither in the office nor in their field inspections called attention to the fact that the project had expanded enormously. And that, and part of that was that they really bypassed the Architectural Commission, which was disturbing to many people. And so I, anyway, I came in afterward and have made an effort in several ways to try to organize the process so we only, we're dealing with a few issues at the same time because there were so many problems with the state of the design at that time. So we've, we've, we've picked things out very carefully. I'm sorry?
You keep going, Patrick.
So what we tried to do is stage it so that we're not dealing with too many things at the same time. So maybe the most important part, most important part of it now is the glazing, which consists of two parts. The, the freeze of, 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 of the the, the, the transom windows at the top and the, and then the corner windows below trying to really reduce the size of the corner post. I believe that we have with, the, the, the transom window was not very difficult, almost right away, working with J B Sash. They could, they could do it very, very well in a way that we thought was truly sympathetic with the kind of process that would have happened many decades ago. But in fact, it's even better because it's true divided lights, double glazed, which the, the original was, I'm sure, single glazed. So that, that was something that we did work out with J B Sash, and I think others probably would have been able to do it, although they've been especially constructed. But then on the lower part, that was much more difficult. That corner post was structure, the builder and his engineer had an idea that they need that, that structural that post needed to be much, much larger than what our conclusion had been. After studying it, our feeling was that, in fact, there was no load to speak of on that corner. It was really a matter of glass meeting glass at the corner. Nonetheless, it is double glazed for many good reasons. And so there's a little bit more complexity in such a joint in double glazing. However, we've pretty much been able to achieve a similar appearance to what was there way back in time, which was approximately what was, it was fair, a fair amount under two inches in width in each face of, of that corner post. There, there is also the dimension of the sash, but the post we were able to reduce by pretty close to a third, thus relieving the design of something that many people in the, that original hearing thought was disturbing and, and aesthetically unacceptable, also in, in, in in contradiction to the historical nature of that facade. So I think that we've gotten back to something that even though it's in many respects, there's an aspect of artifice to it because it's, the double glazing is a very, very different proposition. But we've pretty much been able to get it down to a very slender corner. So there are some other differences from the very old, and that is rather than having a single transom that went all the way across, we have divided that into three parts with separations between them. And it simply was a bit pragmatic to have pieces that could be easily done, but also proportionally relate to the rest of the building as, as it was and as it is. So it's a, it's a relatively minor change, but one that, in our judgment, felt true to the overall composition. There are other, there are other parts of the elevation as well, but I'd like to stop for a moment to see how people respond to the, to our approach to the glazing. And then we can deal with some other aspects of the design.
I have a question of the transom. You show it four lights high. I thought the image you'd shown before was three lights high. Am I wrong?
Yeah, no, no, you're not. I actually think that what we would like to do is to have the, the transom be, the, the, the four has a lot to recommend it, which is that they're basically all square lights. It looks very nice. I'm happy with that. I believe that earlier it was three lights, but, but I don't the, the amount of documentation that we have is fairly slender and the four lights high seems rather good. We've looked at many, many oddly enough, Irish pubs in Boston, but also in Dublin. And the transom is quite a feature. It's historically interesting because even though Jack Kylie and Julianne both very much identify as Irish, it's actually, the building itself has been many, many different things over the years and not as far as we know, an Irish pub. That's very dear to them if, if we can achieve something related to not only a pub in Dublin, but also some of the really nice, beautiful bars, Irish pubs in Boston such as, as on Upper Beacon Street and in a number of other locations where the transom is sometimes a feature, but also a rather delicate polychrome approach. The building as, in general was black, completely black. And what we hoped is that we might have delicate highlights of gold trim on it. And that was a departure from the what, what the facade was composed of a year and a half ago when unfortunately it, the facade was destroyed, at which point it was virtually all black with some irregularities, but, but the, but in prior history, the facade had been, had, had been, had a variety of different forms and different styles of painting and signage and the like. So we took some liberties, but not against the history, but possibly a new stage.
Okay, so Patrick, thank you for this, for taking us through this. Just to sum up very quickly for the commission. So what, what's before us today is principally two things, right? Three, let's call it three things. Thanks, Nick. We're now looking at the, the, the elevation here. First is the replacement of just the boards on the transom with transom lights. The second is the reconfiguration of these corner where the, where the front windows go at an angle and turn inward toward the door, these corner posts to make them thinner. And then thirdly is the, actually, I guess there's, there's another but at a high level, the other aspect is the, the, the introduction of this what's shown in yellow on the diagram here, this trim detail in the, in the coloring, right? Have I left anything out?
Well, just, since this had been raised quite rightly by Nick, evidently in the process of making this presentation, somehow the electrical panel, which would be, as we're looking at the building here, on the left or north side in the lower panel, right, right in the very area of Nick's arrow. There is a, a, a white metal panel that was historically part of the, the electrical system and access panel, evidently for the electric company. For various reasons, it is no longer necessary, but it's rather a nice artifact and we would actually would like to reinstall that in a slightly different position than it had been, centering it rather than having it to the side. It just seemed a stronger place in the composition. And otherwise, I think that you've, in the past, we've dealt with the lighting and the signage and they have both been approved. Although they are integral to the overall composition, but, but they're not, they're not emphasized in this one.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I've been down to ask this question. And I changed your presentation, but this is a violation, correct? Right now, we're doing a violation review. So, yes, let's go because as a presentation, this is great, but I want to concentrate. Let's get down to the nitty gritty of it. What is the actual violation? Is it something that you, that you decided to do on your own that we?
No, we, as, as I said earlier, we were not involved with the project at all until, well, after the, the violation hearing. So, that's right, we're the, well, there are various operative cliches for whatever role it was. But, but I, but I think, I think I truly believe in the sincerity of Julianne Kylie's approach that it, this really was a quagmire into which she was drawn without any intention on her part. And when, when it was called to her attention, she took it very, very seriously. And she sought out me because of my experience, my, our company's experience in with their historic architecture of Beacon Hill. And so our role has been to try to create not just repair, but to create a, an appealing and a facade that, that draws strongly from the history of this, this building and others on Beacon Hill.
But to the commissioner's question, what was the viola, Nick, what was the actual violation?
Yeah, so let me just get to the screen. So the violation is everything that Patrick is talking about right now. So it is.
They rebuilt the storefront without permission, basically. It was a repair.
No, I know that. What about the transom?
That's part of it, correct. Yeah, so the entire storefront is up for discussion because everything was replaced. So now we are visiting the entire storefront and legalizing it essentially. And Patrick is presenting his plans to do so.
But, but, but just, just to, just to respond to the, 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 the transom really is it relates to the, the older history of the, of this structure, but it, Nick, could you possibly put on the actual current existing facade?
Sure.
Okay.
Let me just bring it up. Nope, almost there.
Oh yeah, that's right. This was, that, what, what Nick is showing there is the prior form of the, of the facade. And now this is the one that was constructed a year and a half ago and was without the permission of the commission. And, and they're, and they're, and actually, well, I'm not, not surprising. The commission was very articulate about some of the things that seemed very distasteful about it. And, and, and Julianne Kylie is very sympathetic with these criticisms. One of which is that the posts at the corners of the, of, of the corner windows are excessively large. Unfortunately, the engineer and the builder on their own felt that these were necessary, but our analysis says they're not. And, and that's so anyway, so, so that, so that, that, that was among the criticisms. I think overall everybody thinks they're very beefy.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you, do you have a detail of the actual corner as you propose to reduce it?
Yes.
That, that's the, that's the critical detail for me to look at how you diminish, what the diminished corner looks like.
Yes, I, I have to admit, that has not been confirmed. I believe that that is very, very close, that we, we expect that we will have, yeah, there you go. So what, what you see there is drawn as an inch and a quarter. It's possible that it will be slightly larger than that, but we're working, we've been, at the time that we did this, we were working with very good sash companies around Boston, who had even done some of the, the, the sash on Charles Street. But those, when those ones were in fact all single glazed and with a type of mullion that is no longer a white metal mullion is no longer used. And the narrowest that they could produce was about four inches in aluminum.
Right, okay.
And so what, what we're going for, even though actually what we're showing there, we, we felt it would be possible that we would custom made a metal sash, but in talking with them with J B Sash and Marvin, we believe that we can make a wooden corner that is very, very close to this in dimension.
It was one and a quarter inches on each face because it's
That's right, that's correct.
So, so you'd be, but that's considerably less than what is currently marked up on the site.
The, the existing is, is a, is around four inches. I believe it's slightly, slightly larger.
It looks like a one by four.
Yeah, yeah, right. And yeah, inside it has two, I believe, two two by fours. And, and, but the, but by the time it's case, it's, you know, it's significantly larger than that. So this.
What, what do you imagine the original post was at the corner?
Was it round? I, I, I actually just by looking at the way that these sash were made, and one can even see just down the street, there is, there, there are several mullions that appear, that appear, that are made of a white metal inside and out, and the glazing either butts or sometimes is, 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 is held by the by those mullion pieces. There, there, there is one, it's actually really hard to, to see, but it's about three buildings down. I believe it's upstairs, downstairs, and it's somewhat canted. So it's the closest to this. And it is very, well, it's, it's, it's not really possible to tell what's inside of it. But it would appear as though, again, it's a couple of pieces of white metal that have been sandwiched holding the glass. But again, it's single, single pane glass. So it's a little bit different than what we're doing.
What is the thickness of the double pane glass you're proposing?
Well, what we're imagining is that the double pane will be a quarter inch of glass, a quarter inch of, 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 of vacuum space and a quarter inch of glass.
Three quarters of an inch.
Correct.
So you're ending up with still a pretty fat molyne, but it's a corner, but diminished.
But, but actually comparatively comparable, that's redundant. Anyway, somewhat comparable to, uh, what the appearance of the ones down the street. Um, it's the overall, it's definitely beefy. Uh, it, 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 you know, it is a corner. It doesn't have any load bearing requirements.
I understand that. I understand. I'm just talking about why it's still as fat as it is and if the double pane glazing is, is creating that, uh, condition.
I, I, I think that's a fair statement. I think the, the double pane, uh, does add, uh, to the overall massiveness of it. However, uh, uh, from the point of view of what one can see of the corner molyne, this may be comparable. It, it's, it, 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 it is possible to s- to, if one looks very, very closely at the, um, at the photograph of the existing position, of, of the situation of a year and a half ago, what you will see is there seems to be even some flashing that's going over some thin metal. It's, it's, um, and, um, that, that's going over some sort of molyne detail. Unfortunately, we, we've been unable to, to find anything exactly like that. In terms of the visible slenderness, this should be actually very analogous, both inside and out.
I mean, the optimum, I'll just one more comment. The, the optimum solution to this problem would be that the corner posts be in metal.
Well, that, I, I would have liked that. And we did talk with many glazers. I couldn't get anybody to build it. What I could get was, uh, Marvin and JB Sash, who worked very closely together, basically felt that they could do it in wood. Now, if it comes to it, if, if we can do it, what I would like is to have a wood post with a very thin, you know, sixteenth of an inch, maybe even less of flashing that wraps it to recreate the metal appearance previously, but also I think it would actually help protect the, um, that, 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 that situation is in a situation of very high traffic. People handle it and it would be best if it had some degree of metal protection, even if it's not met, no, the, 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 the design that you see, I thought I could have that fabricated out of solid metal. It didn't seem to me like a huge project. I have not been able to find anybody who will do that for me.
Okay.
So Mo, to, to, to sum up, Mo, I think the bottom line is what was there before the actual wood was thinner than what they're proposing, but there is a pretty wide piece of metal flashing on either side. So the total expression of the thing was probably bigger than what they're proposing. Um, you know, so six and one half dozen the other. I think, you know, of course, we, we entertain bigger muttons to accommodate insulated glass in, in windows as generally, maybe this is kind of in that same category. Uh, commissioners, any other questions before we take public comment on this? I just want to move this along so we can have a discussion about the particulars. Thank you, Commissioner Feingold. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Uh, we'll come back and we'll circle back and, and, and debate this, of course, but, uh, we appreciate all the information and very much your efforts, uh, to be responsive to our concerns and make this thinner, uh, and, uh, try to restore at least the spirit, if not the, uh, exact design of the transom lights. Again, we'll, we'll talk specifics in a, in a moment, but for the moment, why don't we take public comment? Again, if you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand using the button on your Zoom panel and Nick will call in you and turn in and unmute you.
Okay, uh, first we have, um, Rochelle with the Civic Association. Rochelle, go ahead.
Yeah. Hi. Speaking of civic association, we oppose ratification of the current and proposed alterations to the unapproved rebuilding of the storefront as it still remains changed into a completely different style, specifically a British pub vernacular. The modifications and proposed modifications are not an appropriate architectural change to this building and do not satisfy guideline A four, do not duplicate the original trim as specified by guideline F two and do not match the original features and composition, design, color, texture, and other visible qualities as specified by guideline A two, especially the tripartite zones with golden borders that do not evoke the prior uninterrupted ban of fenestration condition to meet guideline A three. We do not appreciate the return to thin corner molyne. We do appreciate the return to thin corner molyne at the storefront. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rochelle. Um, Mark, I'm not seeing any other public comments, so, uh, we can turn it back to you.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Thank you very much, Rochelle. Okay, so again, we're talking about, uh, transom lights, uh, the, the, uh, rework of the design for the main windows, this corner specifically, uh, the gold, uh, the, the addition of the gold trim. Uh, let's, uh, take this, uh, this corner element first, since we were just talking about that and it's all fresh in our mind. Again, I, Patrick, I appreciate the efforts you've made, uh, to try to address this concern. Uh, to my eye, it looks a lot better. Um, I appreciate that we're talking about insulated glass, which of course is now very much a common feature that we see. And of course, we've approved in all kinds of other contexts for fenestration generally. And moreover, we appreciate that, uh, unfortunately, but realistically, there is at times a necessity to make, uh, the molynes and or muttons larger uh, to accommodate the insulated glass in a manner that, uh, ensures that the structure and take, uh, the structural integrity of the window will be retained. Uh, doesn't serve the interest of historic preservation if the thing falls apart in a few years and you have to make a new one. Um, so, um, I, I guess to my view, I think, uh, I'm satisfied uh, with the result that we have here, uh, particularly given, um, you know, there's the original, uh, wood element in the window, but then there's the effective width of it, which was considerably large, made considerably larger by the flashing uh, on the inside. And I think what we've wound up with, I don't know for certain, but just looking at the images Nick had up there and the, and the drawing we're looking at right now, I think the net effect, uh, of the proposed, uh, rework of this uh, is one that gives us, uh, an effective width that's pretty close to what you saw before when you just looked at it, given the wide flashing on either side. This, I think frankly, would be a neater appearance if nothing else, because that silver flashing kind of stuck out from the otherwise black, uh, wood element and so forth. Um, but, uh, with that, let me ask my colleagues here, um, Commissioner Feingold, you were just talking about this. Does anyone, uh, have a different view of this? Or, uh, what do you think of Patrick's revised design for this, this corner? Any dissenting views? Okay.
This is Feingold again. I, I think, I mean, I had an exhaustive questioning before. I, I, I think he's done the best he can, and I think it's fine.
Yeah, that's kind of where I come out as well, um, under the circumstances. Uh, let me just say, I should have said at the outset, um, this is a violation. Um, and, uh, appreciate the comments of the Civic Association wanting to, uh, be pretty precise about, uh, how we treat this. But I will say for my part, I, I don't believe, uh, in all candor, that there's anything particularly important or historic about the fine details of this storefront. I think the fact that it is a storefront, uh, of course, uh, matters tremendously. And, uh, I don't believe we would be contemplating something that would rework the building, uh, to remove the storefront or otherwise perhaps even restore it to original, you know, kind of residential configuration or something like that. I think what we're, the, the question here is how important are these details? We've just worried one of them pretty significantly, which we thought was very important, which is the delicacy, for lack of a better word, of some of these elements, which Patrick has taken, it looks like, uh, some, some significant pains to, to try to get us at least closer to delicacy that we had. I think that's absolutely a step in the right direction. Um, I think, uh, because we're not dealing with, at least in my opinion, a particularly historically significant storefront, again, in its, in its fine detail, um, I don't believe as a matter of principle that we ought to sort of, uh, cement in amber, if I'm not mixing my metaphors too badly, um, uh, you know, a, a not particularly successful design. And so I think there is room in this case, in my opinion, uh, to try to improve it. And I think the transom light, as we discussed, uh, in the prior hearing, is an attempt to restore historical detail, at least, uh, or at least make an homage to what might have been, uh, you know, a more fully expressed historical detail, but for which we know certainly there is evidence there was some fenestration in the transom, uh, that I think there's room to improve this. And specifically, I, I'm fine with the idea of bringing back a transom light. We've, I think we've already, uh, agreed on that. It's just a question of, uh, how to do it. Um, Patrick, Nick and I were talking, and I appreciate your comments earlier about, you know, how many lights should there be? Um, in, in talking about this, Nick and I were talking, I, I think, I, I won't speak for Nick, but I'll let him speak for himself. I think we were kind of persuaded that a treatment more analogous to what's next door, where it's one small light, a double light, and then another small light, uh, might be less busy and more appropriate. I think, um, uh, this is like, uh, let's just call it a con- informed conjecture, but maybe if you can get the photograph back up again, Nick. Um, the building next door, uh, these storefronts, you know, we can probably conjecture that they were added in, you know, turn of the nineteenth to twentieth century. And, uh, that treatment of the, 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 the square light and then a double light and then a square light is at least vaguely evocative of the kind of arts and crafts style fenestration that you do see in a few places elsewhere. Thanks, Nick. Uh, we're looking at the one on the left now. Ninety-five Mount Vernon Street, for example, which is that very large apartment on the upper side of West Cedar in the corner of Mount Vernon, um, has, uh, uh, similar treatment, uh, in, in the fenestration. That building is from that period. We know this because we, they redid the windows some years ago and we required them to replicate the sort of arts and crafts styles that was designed, uh, at that time, part of the design at the time. Um, so, uh, Patrick, you, you had, I think, said, and I'll put words in your mouth, but you, you were kind of, um, you rather liked this design we see on the left, uh, with, with the double in the middle. How do you feel about, um, using something like that instead?
I feel very, very comfortable with that. I, I think, I, I, I really enjoy your, um, your allusion to the arts and crafts, because to some extent, what we're dealing with is a very kind of late echo of, of the arts and crafts, Art Nouveau, and even the beginning of Deco. And, and, and I think that that arrangement of the lights does relate to that more than it does to, uh, rather more simple proportioning of, of the lights. So I, I would think that would be an asset. I, I'm, I've been, as you, as you commented, I've been very drawn to the one on the left. Uh, I was, I, I, we made an effort to re- recreate the historical on this building, but it's, it's very difficult to, um, to know for sure. It does look a little bit, if you look on the right side, as if it's actually, it's actually a system of three, but when we actually drew it up, we ended up with four and it would have been ve- it's very easy to double up in the middle and to have it, uh, uh, echo that, that design of the past. And, and I think it would be, in my judgment, judgment, uh, very handsome. Not overly elegant, but, but with a, with a, with a lovely grace, a subtle grace.
Yeah, I think it's, it's got, uh, sort of more to recommend it just architecturally. It's a bit of a little more of a stylistic statement. I will say, for what it's worth, I, I, I'm not suggesting for a moment that we have direct evidence that suggests that this particular transom light would have looked like this, but, you know, in cases like this where we don't have hard evidence either way, because whatever there was, was lost and, and we know what's there now is not original. Um, of course, historically, what we have done, um, pretty consistently is look for uh, uh, analogous cases that are at least a clue, uh, to the stylistic intent that was evident at the time. And I, for example, when there are iron railings that have been removed and we don't know what they would have looked like originally, but we have a house next door, uh, that was built in the same period. Um, you know, we, we've, we've sometimes specified that, uh, that the adjacent railing be replicated for want of any direct evidence of what the original railing would have looked like. I think this is kind of analogous to that case. We're not asserting that these buildings were twins built at the same time, but it's at least a clue as to what this might have looked like, um, that is, um, less of a conjecture than just designing something from scratch and saying, well, um, you know, here's one idea, as it were. Uh, as. Go ahead, Commissioner Feingold.
Uh, as my first comment was about why four lights instead of three. And I, I think that because it's just too much gritting, uh.
Yeah.
So, uh, this suggestion of going one, two, one is very interesting. And, you know, it's just a commercial thing and it would lighten the top a bit. Having the transom all glass is great, uh, but, uh, I, I like that idea. I have two other small comments when you get around to a commission.
Please go ahead. You've got the floor. Go ahead.
Oh, well, uh, there was one comment made about there's a, there's an electrical panel you wanted to, which is no longer, uh, necessary. If those things come and go, we know, like TV aerials of the antennas of the past, uh, I wouldn't have it there as a fake. I just wouldn't have it. And I certainly would not put it in the middle, because then, you know, I would have it offside like it was, but I just wouldn't have it. Uh, because it's not, nothing is significant about it. The second is, I would, I, I, I keep hearing the word gold, uh, like gold paint about something. Th- there's, it, it's, it's a very contemporary sore point. There's too much gold being used, uh, so we say nationally. So, uh, what, wh- why is, where is the gold paint you're proposing and why?
But it's, it's on very, very light molding, basically, essentially three quarter inch. And the, what we would do ideally is to have the sign painter, who did a very, very beautiful job, and, and that can be seen, uh, at the existing pub. And he's going to add more in this form of the sign that's going to be, uh, reinstalled and added to with the, um, allusion to the current, the, the daughters of Jack Colley. Um, and so it's meant to be a very, very light trim. It's not meant to be, have the kind of, uh, kind of bombastic weight of what I think you're alluding to, uh, in some of our, uh, public buildings. It's, thi- this is really like a pinstripe more of.
Why do you need it at all?
Well, it relates to the history of the Irish pub. Uh, it's, it's beautiful. Uh, and, um, and I think we would execute it very, uh, very nicely.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. I'm, I'm finished, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Chris Feingold. Um.
Mark, we should probably start, um, wrapping up this, this conversation. We've been going on 50 minutes, just so you know.
Yes, yes, thank you, Nick. Um, right, let's move this along. Uh, so, um, any other, uh, thoughts on the, the substituting, uh, sort of one to one configuration, which is to say, uh, one large light then in the middle and the two smaller lights on the top and bottom of the transom light? Any other, any objections to that? Okay, I'm not hearing any. Um, and, uh, the, let's see. There was the, okay, so the corner things I think we're okay with. It sounds like, I think we're okay with the revised design uh, for the transom light, uh, that leaves the gold, uh, painting. Uh, any other commissioners have thoughts about that, either, either for or against the addition of this gold trim? And, and again, to be clear, it's, it's on an applied molding in, in some services and then, uh, painting out the, uh, recess and the others.
It's no track number yet until six o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, so I would say that since we're a bit at a loss, like in all honesty, we're a bit at a loss at this particular site. A lot of the things that we, we should have known about have been removed. He's trying his best to make it as close as possible to what might have been there. Um, the idea of the classic pub, I mean, this is Boston. I think that to have something that looks like close to an Irish pub in an old part of Boston makes sense. Um, I'm not against it.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Patrick. Okay, thank you. Um, and Patrick, let me just ask, uh, because, and I appreciate this is just a, perhaps, perhaps an artifact of the rendering, but it looks quite yellow, uh, in the drawings. And, um, we'd obviously want to see a sample of this, uh, to begin with, uh, before you ever paint out the whole thing. May, maybe you could just, assuming we're, we're as a group, okay with this. Um, I think maybe we'd, we'd want you to just paint out one of the moldings or something so we could see it.
We, we, we would, we would definitely be very, very open to doing a mockup of the individual pieces. We have submitted, um, the actual color, because oddly enough, even gold, you know, in, in, in the, in the, in the, in the, in the hierarchy of, of modern paints, there is a number attached to it. But the, but more relevant to me is that the people who made the sign did such a beautiful job and our idea is to have them simply do the work. Because they know, they know how to do it, do it.
Yeah, and it's this metallic paint, so it, obviously it doesn't, it's not gold, but it looks like gold. Can you just tell us very quickly, uh, if we go back to the image that shows the outline of, of, of the, uh, yeah, uh, how wide are we talking about for the, um?
It's, well, I, I believe that we've given you a drawing from Anderson McQuade of their, 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 their molding, which is a stock molding. Uh, there, there are some instances where we might have to shave it down. We might, it may, might butt it together so it wouldn't be absolutely stock. Uh, that would be, we, we would need the latitude to play that a little bit by ear, but we would try to do it in the most harmonious way possible. Now, I, I, I mean, I haven't spoken with the sign painter about this. I, I would not be averse myself to having him take a strip of the, the molding and just build it and then deliver it and we can hold it up onto the wall or maybe a few pieces so that we can sense the, the composition. I think what we'll find is that it's very delicate. Uh, I know we, we had no ability to draw that. Architectural drawings, um, are much more clunky in the era of, um, of object-based, uh, three-dimensional presentation. It used to be we drew, drew with lines. Now it's very hard to achieve that kind of finesse, but this is the way we, we make things.
Right, okay, so, um, you know, with, with respect to this, uh, it, Nick, can you, uh, remind us, uh, so, so, you know, that, I don't know that, that there's certainly not another example of exactly this kind of treatment. Of course, on Charles Street, I mean, there's, there aren't any really other, other pubs of this nature, but, um, so appreciate this is a particular architectural, uh, stylistic treatment that is common, uh, on English or Irish pubs. But, uh, I guess the question then comes down to its historical appropriateness. There are a couple of other examples on Charles Street of, of facades that are two different colors, at least, um, with, you know, window trim being one color, for example, and, and, um, you know, a freeze above the storefront, another and so forth, but they're relatively rare. Uh, Nick, did you want to just remind the commissioners your sort of recommendation on this particular feature, this aspect?
We're talking about the, the gold trim?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I, I think it's fine. Um, I think we should see a mockup of the, the color. Um, but I think, um, overall, it provides a nice contrast to the, the monotone color that was there before, which was all black. Um, and I think, um, from a staff perspective, I'm okay with it. Um.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, uh, right, that's another, I think, important consideration, just very quickly. Um, this facade is otherwise utterly monochrome and it's all black. Um, so this is an attempt to add, if not restore, uh, some, um, additional detail in the form of the color. Okay, uh, so with that, and I guess that the remaining item is the, uh, electrical cover. I mean, it was there, it's been put back in the middle, it was in the other spot. Um, as strictly speaking, it was an element that historically had been there for a long time. There are a lot of these things, um, a lot of these kinds of things are no longer in use, but they are, uh, nevertheless still there. They do reflect a history of the building. So I think, um, I, I, I guess I wouldn't necessarily use Commissioner Feingold's word of calling it a fake. It certainly is not doing anything now, but it was an element that was, uh, it did serve a function for probably a long period of this building's life. And so I, I think it, you know, it's embossed metal. It's kind of an interesting, uh, feature and it does speak to, uh, the evolving history of the building. So I, I would prefer that we keep that. Um, it's, uh, it, it, since it's not doing anything, I guess it can be put back in its original location. Commissioner Feingold, if you feel strongly about that. Um, but it is where it is now, uh, it is back on there and it's centered. Um, anyone else have a, a strong view on that or a view at all? It's not shown in this, in this diagram, but it is there on the building right now. Um, okay, uh, in, so to move this to a conclusion then, uh, unless I hear any other further, uh, views on this, uh, I would move that the application, number one, that the, uh, I'll make backup, Nick. Um, if we approve what's, what's before us today, does that, uh, take care of the violation entirely? Or is there anything else?
Yeah, you just, uh, motion to approve how you want to approve it and then, um, also, uh, motion to ratify the violation in the same motion. Yeah.
Okay, so I, I would move as follows, uh, that the, uh, violation be dismissed and the, uh, application be, be approved with the following provisos. Uh, number one, uh, that the, uh, exact specifications of, uh, the window, uh, element, the corner window element, uh, to the extent that they, um, may differ in the final construction, uh, be supplied to staff for, for approval in advance. Number two, uh, that the transom light, uh, be revised to reflect the agreed upon revised configuration of, uh, uh, the double, uh, height light in the middles, uh, and the single height light on the top and bottom, such as that it is a three-light vertical configuration with the middle light being twice the height of the, uh, upper and lower lights. Uh, and that the, uh, painting of the molding, the gold painting, uh, a sample be applied, uh, and, uh, approved by staff, uh, in advance uh, of the, uh, completion of the work.
I second that motion.
Okay, uh, we will vote. Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Mr. Feingold. Uh, no, I think.
I want to make a friendly amendment to the, which is, I, I, I totally object to the, to this panel. Other than that, I think it's fine.
Oh, okay, sorry. I, I, I asked for further comments on that and I, I didn't hear you. If you had made one, forgive me. Uh, we're in the middle of voting on, on the motion, so as procedurally, uh.
I object to it.
Well, uh, you know what?
So, so no, Ray Mo.
I'm voting no because of that silly panel.
Okay, uh, so Commissioner Feingold votes no. Uh, Commissioner Pfeifer votes yes. Uh, Commissioner Steele. Um, did we lose Commissioner Steele?
No. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you. Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, so I believe the motion carries. Yes, Nick?
Motion carries, yes.
Yes, okay, so it is approved. Patrick, thanks very much for all your work on this and Bridgette and Philippa.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you all. I mean, they're a, a very, very insightful, uh, discussion.
You'll get a letter from Nick as usual. If you have any questions, uh, please follow up with him directly and be in co- he'll be in contact or be in contact with him about a sample and he'll come out and see it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be there.
Uh, moving right along, ninety-seven Mount Vernon, is there a representative from ninety-seven Mount Vernon present? That would be, I believe, Espino.
Yep, I just hit unmute. There you go. Stephen, you should be all set.
Okay. Here I am.
Uh, welcome, Stephen. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Just give us a quick summary. Uh, it's, we're talking about an intercom. Is that correct?
Okay, the, oh, you were ahead of me. Um, that is the existing ugly intercom that's been here for a couple of years that is the violation. And, um, the, all right, this is, I called Boston Forging and Welding, gave them the dimensions that I need and they ma- they just made up the box. I had gone to see, can you, uh, uh, let's see, I wanted to get to this picture. Um, the picture at one oh eight Mount Vernon, that's the inside of it. And then, oh, there it is.
Yeah.
That one is the one that Mr. Armada sent me to see, to see what he would approve. And that's it. And that is what our box will look like once it's polished and buffed and I hope lacquered and then engraved. It has to be hand engraved. And they're willing, they're, they're doing it. I mean, we, we bought the thing where, where it's being worked on and.
Okay, so the box will, will cover the existing thing that's there now. Uh, will it, will it basically, can we go back to the image of the, uh, existing intercom panel? Uh, and, and can you just tell us, are you seeing this too, Stephen?
Uh, yep.
And it will fit within this white molding that goes around?
My, my, my ideal thing is that there's a, that, the black thing that looks just like a black.
Yep.
Panel behind this is a cowl. It's not a, it's not a panel, it's not a flat thing. It's a cowl, it's kind of a, it's like a thing you'd see on the old, uh, payphones. And it's, it's ugly and that molding is ugly. I want to have all that removed and then have that brass box popped on there and this disconnected, put back onto the brass, into the brass box and attached and ready to go.
Okay, so the, my, my question is just, will the brass box be any taller than, than the inside dimension of the white molding we're looking at?
No.
Okay, great. Uh, so it'll fit inside there. That's all I wanted to establish. Okay? Um, and very good. And you said that you, you're proposing some engraving on the outside of it?
Yeah, the address, ninety-seven Mount Vernon.
Okay, very good.
Exact, in fact, just exactly what the, um, finished product there is. And it says, uh, intercom panel, open to, you know, whatever. So, yeah, exactly that.
Right, okay.
Only it'll be ninety-seven Mount Vernon.
Okay, and then finally, the, like this one, you notice we're looking at the one oh eight Mount Vernon. The hinge is on the inside.
Yep.
Right, so you don't see it?
That's right.
You're gonna do the same thing?
Same thing.
Great, okay.
And one, one more thing, I'm gonna look into having that white molding and the cowl removed so it'll just sit on a flat, white surface. Because the, the, I mean, that's, it, part of the molding is missing.
Okay.
But I think the brass box will be better if it's just sitting on the white surface.
Okay, as long as you can patch that and repaint it so that you.
Oh, it'll be done professionally.
Yeah.
It'll be done, it'll, will be done. They're not going to stand for any.
Right.
Um, second rate things.
Okay, and, and, uh, since this is kind of a close-up view, just for the benefit of the commissioners, this is, the dress is, is, uh, ninety-seven Mount Vernon, but this entrance is on West Cedar Street and.
It's on West Cedar Street.
Yeah, and this is in the recess of the entrance. In other words, what we're looking at here is ninety degrees to the street, right?
Mm-hmm.
Great, okay, that's kind of important in terms of our being okay.
No, I understand.
This particular treatment. Um, okay, uh, commissioners, any other questions about what is proposed here? Okay, we will then take, yeah.
Mark, sorry, just a comment from me. Um, so I'm just looking at the entrance on, um, Google Street View. We only have one very limited view, but, um, for, just a question for Stephen. Is the white molding, is this kind of, um, is it the same on the other side? Because it looks like there are panels on the other side. You said you're gonna remove the molding, but there's.
With this, this molding, yeah, there's nothing on the other side as far as I know. It's all just a flat surface. We're actually having it painted next week.
So it looks like there's, there is some molding here. And sorry, I don't have a better view. Um, everything's blurred out on Google Street View in this area. But it looks like there's molding on this side. So I'm assuming it's also on the other side and we would want to retain that.
I can, I can, I can have that molding, uh, have them keep that molding.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I mean, I'll leave it to the commission, but I just wanted to show the commission that there is decorative molding on the interior of this door and we'll want to make sure that it's maintained because it looks like it's original. Um, sorry, Mark, just wanted to make sure that we're aware.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. That's kind of where, where I was coming from. Uh, if, uh, it looks like that molding on that side, Nick, might be recessed though, rather than.
Yeah.
The recessed panels, so, um, I think what, what we want to do, and maybe we can even just delegate this to staff in terms of how you treat that, um, that, that molding. Okay, uh, let's come back to that. Um, and Nick, would you, would you be comfortable just, uh?
Yeah.
Making a final call on that? Great, okay. Um, so commissioners, any other just clarifying questions before we take public comment on this? Okay, let's go ahead and take public comment. If you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand in the zoom, using the button at the bottom of your zoom panel, Nick, we'll meet you and call on you in turn.
Okay, first up we have, oops, sir. The first up we have is Rochelle. Um, Rochelle, go ahead.
Uh, we can also big association, we don't post enclosure of the intercom in the brass boxes, it satisfies guideline E seven. Uh, we also included photos of either side of the doorway and the comment.
Thank you, Rochelle. Mark, I'm not seeing any other public comments, so we can go back to you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yes, I see. Now, thank you, Rochelle. I'm looking at those right now. That is very helpful. Uh, it looks like there is recessed paneling on the opposite side and an applied molding on this side, but there's a bigger sort of rectangle of molding, uh, that, that's, you can't see in the zoomed up ver- zoomed in version, uh, that would be retained. Um, so I don't know if we do need this smaller square in which the panel is now sitting. But again, we'll leave that to Nick, uh, to finalize. I'm happy to do that. Um, you can see the applied molding on, on the right there, yeah. Um, okay, uh, no other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment. Okay, so, um, let me actually, uh, quickly, Nick has a very nice summary in the staff comments on this. So this is, uh, for everyone, for the public's benefit, uh, you know, uh, 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 an issue that's come up many times now, uh, of late, uh, the installation of these, uh, digital intercom panel systems with cameras and so forth. And, uh, this is, uh, a treatment that we have approved in certain circumstances, not in every circumstance, but to enclose the panel in a box in certain circumstances. And I believe it's fair to say, uh, I'm just finding, uh, the Nick's very helpful notes on this. Um, that, uh, this particular, uh, circumstance does meet the, uh, de facto standard or criteria that we've established, uh, for in, in adjudicating this, uh, which is the following, it is on a facade not facing the street. We've already established that, uh, there's, there's no major interior renovations occurring. Uh, no architectural features will be obstructed or obscured. And there are, uh, more than one unit in the, in the building. In other words, it kind of requires, the nature of the building requires an intercom panel that can access a large number of units, um, uh, and so forth. So, um, I, I think this does, uh, you know, obviously in the first instance, we would prefer that these things, of course, not be installed in the first place. Uh, but, uh, we can't unring the bell here. What we can try to do is correct this, uh, in a, in analogous and consistent fashion with how we've done it in other examples, one of which is just literally across the street at one oh eight Mount Vernon. And so since I think this does meet the criteria, uh, and is, is an appropriate solution to this, I'm fine with it. Uh, commissioners, any other thoughts to the contrary?
No.
Okay, uh, hearing none, I will approve, uh, the, uh, I'm sorry, I will, I will move to approve of the application as, uh, submitted with the following proviso, uh, that the intercom system is centered on the panel, uh, and, uh, that the unit and proposed brass box are not obstructing any, uh, architectural detail. And the final resolution as to what, if anything, to do with, uh, the existing uh, applied molding around the intercom panel will be delegated to staff. Do I hear a second?
Second it.
Okay, we will vote commissioner, uh, sorry, and, uh, the friendly amendment to the, uh, motion to dismiss the violation contingent on, uh, the, uh, the, the, uh, approval of provisos. Thank you. Uh, we will vote commissioner. Thank you. Uh, we will vote Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Mr. Feingold.
Hi.
Mr. Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele. Uh, Sandy, was that a yes? One more time, Commissioner Steele?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, so there was this little cross talk there. Sorry. Thank you very much, uh, Stephen, for coming in. You'll get a letter from Nick with, uh, the details. Please follow him directly with any questions and, uh, we appreciate your attention to this matter.
Excellent, thank you. Thanks very much.
Have a good night.
You too.
Um, let's see. Next, I believe it's fifty one Charles. Uh, appreciate your patience. Is there, is, is there a representative from fifty one Charles? Who is? Uh, anyone from fifty one Charles?
I think it's Gary. Is it Gary?
Must be on the same.
Uh, let's see.
Same size.
Are you, are you here? Someone from Persona or fifty one Charles? Just, uh, raise your hand in the zoom if you're, if you're here.
Yeah, I'm not seeing them.
All right, uh, let's see. All right. So it looks like they're not here. Uh, maybe we'll check back after the next one and come back to that if, uh, if they show up. But, uh, I guess we need to move on.
Good.
So design review, first item under design review is gonna be, uh, one oh six, two oh six Cambridge?
One oh six.
Is it one, is it one oh six or two oh six? Next, it looks like one oh six on the agenda.
One oh six, sorry, that was my mistake.
Okay, one oh six, uh, somebody here from.
Yep, there she is right there. I see her.
Oh, it's new person.
All right.
And that is, forgive me, uh, that is Ricky, is that Ricky?
My name is Fong. I'm, I'm the site, uh, designer from the, uh, uh, from the new CC sign.
Oh, yes, hi, welcome. Thank you for coming in. Um, and, uh. So do you, you, uh, by the way, I just want to say at the outset, thank you very much for working with Nick, uh, to revise this design in time for. Uh, this hearing, uh, we appreciate that. Uh, can you give us just a quick summary of what you are proposing?
I think the, Nick, the, that's the side for the channel level side, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just realized that. Let me just pull up your updated application. Um, you did send us over an updated one, so let me get that for you. My apologies.
So this is on Cambridge Street, just to orient everyone, uh, near the intersection with Bowden Street. Just, uh, uh, two businesses down from the corner. Uh, now recently added to the historic district, so this is rightly in our jurisdiction.
Got it right here, all right. And thank you very much to Fong for her quick responsiveness on this, um, alteration here. So, uh, here we go.
So, um. For the basic is, uh, just the X sixteen awning, we just, we, uh, change the fiber only, so we, we, we don't touch the fame, we just change the fiber. And then it's a black color fiber and then with the golden yellow color for the letter.
Okay, very good. And this is the, this will constitute the only sign on the building, is that correct?
From, they have a, uh, like, I think they have a three store different, uh, difference, the, the business. In this building, as one is the Dongin Dona on the right hand side and.
For this business, yes, just for this business, I mean, sorry.
For this business, yes, yes.
Right, so it'll be the only sign for this business on the building. Great, okay. Uh, so basically just to orient anyone, if there was any confusion, if someone may have looked on the portal, uh, or the agenda, uh, earlier this month. You are, instead of putting a sign on the building, you're gonna put the, the, the branding for the business on the, on the awning, and that's going to be the sign.
Yeah.
Right, great. Okay, uh, very good. And, um, this is a fixed awning, is that correct?
Yeah.
Not a retractable one, right? And that's, there's one there now, or no?
There's one, just one.
Uh, but, but I'm sorry, is there an awning there now?
Uh, yes, that's the existing awning, yes.
Yes, okay, and it's a black one, uh, and, and you're just gonna replace the awning so you can put your logo on it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Um, so we're just basically changing the awning to change the, uh, the branding on the business, because it's a new business, very good. Um, commissioners, any other questions about what's proposed here?
No.
Okay, we'll take public comment. If you want to be heard on the record, raise your hand in the zoom, Nick will call on you.
Okay, uh, first up we have is Rochelle. Rochelle, go ahead.
We can also big association, we do not oppose the awning with the provisos that the logo graphic be reduced materially. In size and relocated to the bottom strip to satisfy guidelines I six and I seven. End of comment.
Uh, thank you, Rochelle, uh, and not seeing any other public comment, Mark.
Okay, thank you. We'll close, uh, public comment. So let's see, so. Um, forgive me, I was multitasking here, but, uh, to the question of. The size, I think, I mean, they're, they're, uh. Um, this is the only sign on the business, so I think, uh, and, uh, they've put this, the, the logo only on the top of the awning and not on this panel in the front. Which is a treatment that we do see sometimes. There are excellent examples of. Signs functioning, uh, sorry, awnings functioning as signs in the district on Charles Street. Uh, where there is, uh, lettering on both the top and the panel, the balance, or whatever you want to call it, in the front. So I think under the circumstances, I'm, I'm less concerned about, uh. The, the, the size of the, uh, of the lettering, uh, but, uh, commissioners, does anyone, uh, feel differently about that? Should we make it a little smaller? Um, again, understanding, I mean, I think it's, it's, it would be consistent, I think, and Nick, correct me if I'm wrong here, but it would be consistent approximately. Of lettering of, of, of a scale that we would allow if this were a belt sign and not an awning. And I say that, uh, I think it's relevant because again, this is the only signage on the building.
Yeah, there, there's no other signage, including the windows. Um, so I would say that this is a fair dimension for this particular sign. Um, and, um, and we just appreciate the applicant working with us to come up with that.
Right.
I mean. I'm moved to accept it as, 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 well, actually, do any of them have any questions? Or do any other commissioners have any?
I am fine with it myself. Anyone else?
Uh.
We're fine with it.
I'll just note for the record, the scale of the logo at least is, you know, it's consistent with DeLuca's, for example, has a, a, an awning that has a big logo on it and then. Lettering on the balance below. Savonar's before it closed had both large logo that. Top to bottom took up most of the, uh, area, uh, of the awning, so I don't think it's, uh, out of proportion with those, and those buildings. Uh, in both cases also had projecting signs, and so I think under the circumstances, it's, it's, uh, certainly, in my view, acceptable. Um, but I'm sorry, Commissioner Allen, you made a motion to accept as, as submitted?
Yes, correct.
Does anyone want to second that?
Second.
Okay, we will, uh, vote then, uh, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Feingold.
Aye.
Mr. Kiefer votes aye. Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in. Again, appreciate very much your, uh, uh, efforts to, uh. Uh, make something that was, uh, appropriate for the historic district and acceptable to the commission and, uh, appreciate you getting the materials on time, uh, in, on a timely basis. Uh, you'll get a letter from Nick, uh, confirming our determination. If you have any questions, please follow up with him directly. Thanks again.
Thank you so much. Have a wonderful day.
You too, thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, uh, moving along, twenty seven Hancock, I believe, is next. And just a heads up, uh, I think it, the, uh. The, the last two items on the agenda are twenty seven and twenty nine Hancock, sorry about the noise. Um, and, uh, those are the same applicants, so, uh, we, we need to adjudicate them individually, but they are related. Uh, and so just a heads up, um, um, we're gonna, we're gonna have the same applicant for both, and that is Tim, is Tim Jones here?
Yes, I am. Hi.
Hi, Tim. Welcome, thanks for coming in. Uh, let's start with twenty seven. You want to just give us a quick summary of what you are proposing?
Absolutely. So, um, as you've indicated, twenty seven and twenty nine Hancock, they're, um. Um, neighboring buildings, separate application. Twenty seven Hancock, where, um, it's rehabilitation and renovation. Of this building to allow for the creation of, uh, five for sale dwelling units. Uh, the rehabilitation includes facade restoration on Hancock Street. Um, that restoration includes patching and repairing of the existing cast stone. Uh, lentils and sills, uh, we're gonna repaint. Uh, the lentils and sills with the HC sixty nine, which is presented in the, in this, uh, this presentation. Um. There we go. Uh, so one of the, I, one of the things with twenty seven Hancock, it's, it's a mirror image of twenty five, which is just to the right side of it. Um, so what we're trying, we're, we're proposing to do here is, um, you're built at the same time to. Um, to paint, use the same colors that were, um, that were, that are, uh, the coating that's on twenty five for twenty seven. Um, as part of the restoration of the facade, we're replacing the existing windows. Um, all windows with the exception of the window on the first floor, um, I want to confirm, um, clarify there, the first floor window, we're, we're, we're gonna scrape clean and repair that existing window trim. Um, and intent is to, to maintain to keep that window. The remaining windows on Hancock Street will be replaced with the JB Sash, JB proper Bostonian wood windows. Um, we're scraping, cleaning, uh, the existing fireplace, the, I'm sorry, the ba- fire balconies. Um, if you go to. The next sheet, there we go. Um, a little more detail in terms of what we're planning to do at the entry. Um, so, and again, I think I sent some photos, I have some other photos of this. Um, the entry door comparing, this is twenty seven here, um, but twenty five, which is right, uh, right next to this. Um, was, uh, it's a, the wood entry is a unfinished, um, this surround is unfinished wood. We're proposing to do the same thing here to, to scrape this existing, um, the wood, the white paint off of this entrance, off the surround. Um, and refinish it similar to twenty five. Um, we're proposing to install a. The, um, they brought the buzzer that's shown here, um, the exterior pendant. And these are the colors that, um, the HC sixty nine, which we, we're proposing to use on the. All the patching and repairing of the lentils, um, the cast stone. And the sills and HC one ninety. Is the color that we're proposing to use, um, at the cornice as well as on these, um, uh, the fire escapes.
Okay, very good. And, um, just quick question, Tim, on the entry, and then we'll come back to this, but, uh. Just to clarify, the, the, the refinishing of the surround, are you gonna do the door similarly?
Yes, the doors to remain, we're gonna clean this, um, scrape and clean the door, um.
Is it stained or painted right now?
Currently, I believe it's, it appears to be stained.
Okay, I just couldn't tell from the photo, thanks.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, um.
And Mark, during our review, I think we had the, 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 the two doors mixed up, so I think we were looking at the other property, sorry about that, yeah.
Yeah, so we're going from white paint to stain, not the other way around, yeah, got it. Um. Which I think we will find more acceptable, actually, not to, uh, preview too much, but okay, uh, and then there's, uh, light fixture above. Intercom panel, hardware all shown very nicely there. Okay, very good. Um, the, uh, can we go back to the wide shot of the, uh. Entrance, because I, I, I know we've got cornices on both buildings, and I just want to make sure I'm not similarly confusing those. Uh, the cornice is black now, is that right, Tim?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, you're just kind of effectively repainting that in kind.
Yeah, the cornice is black now and continues across twenty five into twenty, uh, twenty seven.
Yeah, got it, okay. And then, uh, finally, the, the repainting, understanding that. Twenty five, not your building, but the twin next door is entirely painted, your building. Uh, is it just the lentils you're painting, or are you painting out that, uh, what looks like first floor?
We're, uh, we're.
Masonry.
We're recoding the entire facade in that, in that HC sixty nine.
Okay, so, but it's not painted right now above the, the first.
There is, yes, there's, there's exist, is some, there is a coating on the, on the upper floors.
Oh, okay, just again, I can't tell from the photo if that's natural stone or not. It is. It is painted?
Yes.
Coated, whatever we want to call it.
It's coated, yes.
Okay, so, so then. Uh, just to clarify further, uh, can we go back to the paint chip for a second? Are we replicating twenty five? Is that what, is that what's proposed?
That's exactly what we're doing.
Matching twenty five?
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't understand that either, thank you. Uh, okay. Uh, and then, at least for the moment, uh, okay, the proposal for the fenestration is what you've shown here, this sort of. Elongated six over six windows on the second and third floor. Uh, what's, what are the windows on the, on the, uh, oh yeah, I see right there, they're, they're two over two right now on the, on the top floor. Right, okay. Um, okay, so again, just for, for clarifying questions at the moment, commissioners, anything else? Uh. We need to better understand what's proposed here?
No.
Okay, um, why don't we, uh, and, and Tim, I didn't mean to cut you off, is there anything else in the proposal that we haven't touched on? Great, okay, let's take public comment. If you want to be heard on the record, raise your hand in the zoom.
Uh, okay, um, let me just see. Uh, the first up we have is Maureen, uh, Maureen, go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Maureen Collins. Um, I actually live at twenty five Hancock Street, apartment one, um, I'm in. Uh, the only owner occupant in the building, so, um, really glad to be invited to join. Um, and I was just wondering in terms of, um, having the same, uh, paint colors and, and mimicking twenty five Hancock, I was wondering. Um, you know, do you, do you plan on hiring the same masonry company, um, to be able to. Do the same mirroring and replication and, you know, is there anything that I can do as a neighbor to help facilitate that?
Um, in terms of matching, so we, we know that, not certain about hiring the same mason, uh, the same company that, that did work for twenty five, not certain who that. Uh, who that person is, but we'd likely bid this out. The, what we did is match the colors, um, we had the paint chips and we went out. Um, and you may have seen us out. Trying not to be, uh, one year stoop, but we did match the color, um, the white all brown to your building. Um, which is great that these were, um, the way that they were, twenty five was restored, so we thought it, and the fact that they're mirror images of each other. Um, so it's quite easy to, to use twenty five as an example of what we want to achieve at twenty nine in terms of, uh, the aesthetic and finish.
Great, yeah, and I, I just wanted to, you know, to lend a neighborly hand if, if there's anything that we can do in terms of. Um, you know, sharing contact information for vendors, just to make sure that, um, you know, everything at, at twenty seven. Uh, looks similarly to twenty five, happy to help you out.
I appreciate that. We, we, um, we're adding a handrail on, um. On twenty seven, and we love the way that yours, like, the, the intent is to match.
Mm hmm.
The, the handrail at twenty, uh, twenty five. Um, if we have any trouble tracking that down, maybe we'll, we can reach out to you. Um, but it's the fact that you're right there and, um, it's a beautiful looking project, um, and the idea is to, again, to, to mimic what was done there.
Great, terrific. And I, and Sunith and I have been, uh, emailed a couple months ago. Uh, because twenty seven and twenty five Hancock share, uh, a, a common easement, and it's actually my unit's. Only emergency aggress, so, you know, when it gets, when it gets time to, you know, work on the back patio and how, you know, logistics on that. Uh, please feel free to reach out to me.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for being so accommodating. I, I, I'm sorry, I apologize, I jumped right in, I should, um. Mention that Sunith and Edward, um, are the owners and our clients with Fenway CDC, CDC are also on the call.
Hello, welcome, thanks for, for joining, and thank you, Maureen. Um, so, Jim, on that last point, just a clarifying question, and we'll, we'll get to, uh, other public comment in a second, but, uh. Since we're on the subject of matching, uh, there is that wonderful, uh, kind of rope detail in this sort of column-like feature between the windows on the first floor. Uh, actually, on, on the window to the left. Um, yeah, that exactly, Nick, thank you. Uh, it appears to be darker on twenty five. See, that's, that's sort of the same color right now as the surrounding window trim. But the one on twenty five appears, at least looking at it on the Google Maps, appears to be darker.
Oh, it's a darker.
Uh, on the right, um, what's the plan there in terms of the, the, the actual window sash and that, that, uh, rope detail? Uh, on the right, um, what's the plan there in terms of the, the, the actual window sash and that, that, uh, rope de- that column detail?
We'll want to match that, the plan will be to match the color there.
Very good.
Twenty, yeah, at twenty five, but I, we didn't, didn't catch the fact that that, that was a, identified that plan.
Right, great, thank you, uh, so sorry, we're still in public comment, again.
We are.
Uh, Nick will, uh, will acknowledge you.
Yep, so next up we have is Christina, Christina, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, my name is Christina Madik, and I am here representing Homes on Hancock, and I just want to, uh, voice our support for this proposal, and that's it.
Thank you, Christina, we appreciate you, um, all right, and last but certainly not least, we have, uh, Rochelle, Rochelle, go ahead.
Uh, Beacon Hill Civic Association, we do not oppose the door hardware as it meets guideline E five for appropriate design. We do not oppose light fixture as it meets guideline E six for traditional location and appropriate size and style. While guidelines G two and G four do not allow lentils to be painted and prefer the existing paint on masonry surface to weather, it appears that the lentils, as well as the entire brownstone body of, of the facade, was painted the same as its sister building, twenty five Hancock. So we do not oppose repainting these fully weathered off surfaces to match twenty five Hancock, which itself was recently repainted under approval in a color that replicates a brown soon. Assuming the windows are documented as nonhistoric or beyond repair, we do not oppose replacing the windows with the JB Sash Proper Bostonian product, known to meet guideline D six for insulated glass, however, the fourth floor windows retain the current two over two configuration, since the proposed six over six configuration does not match twenty five Hancock's four over four configuration. Historically, dormer windows do not have to match the windows of the main facade. Since twenty five Hancock and twenty seven, twenty seven Hancock are sister buildings, we do not oppose changing the painted front entry door and surround condition to match twenty five Hancock, as a very Victorian stained wood finish meets guideline G one for historically appropriate paint color. End of.
Uh, thank you very much, Rochelle, um, Mark, there are no other public comments, so we can turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you, Rochelle, and, uh, um, let's see, so public comment is closed, uh, let's see, so just, uh, recap, we're going to repaint the facade, we're going to refinish the entry, uh, in both cases to match the, the, the twin building at twenty five next door, uh, we're gonna, uh, install light fixture, door hardware, intercom panel and, uh, new windows, uh, Nick, you are satisfied that these windows are not historic, is that right?
Yeah, I looked at them up close, they're, they're definitely not historic, um, the, the, the pattern is unusual, um, so I think we'll need to discuss the, the lights, but, um, they're definitely not historic.
Yeah, uh, so, um, right, let's take that first, because I think that's the one thing that stands out, um, as I think requiring some more attention here. Um, I think again, the windows are not particularly old or historic, and, and I, I think our objective here is, is always, um, to um, when we think about what's appropriate for, uh, and our, our, our guidelines certainly articulate and describe, um, while they don't define historical and architectural appropriateness, there's certainly a theme of, um, uh, being consistent with appropriate for, uh, the original style of the building or the style as it's been modified, and of course, windows are the most common modification that we see. Was not uncommon for buildings, uh, to have, uh, windows replaced, um, to, to an updated style, it's probably the most common feature that we see. Um, this building is otherwise a pretty remarkable specimen in terms of its originality. Um, uh, kind of an, one of several buildings of this distinct, uh, style uh, on Hancock Street, and it's, uh, survived notwithstanding the challenges to the condition of its facade, uh, pretty, pretty much intact. Um, so I think, just in terms of what would have been on this building originally, I think given its vintage, we can be pretty confident they would have been two over two and not six over six. Um, personally, I appreciate, uh, the impulse, the, the, uh, notion, the desire to mirror what is clearly a twin building built at the same time, and what would have been, uh, I think we can be very confident, originally identical. Um, but, uh, it's not uncommon, in fact, um, we need only look literally across the street to find an example uh, of a pair of twin buildings, uh, one of which has had its windows Victorianized with two over two, uh, and the other retaining, uh, its original six over six, the, the, this is a pair of, uh, much older, or well, uh, uh, considerably older federal period buildings from the very early nineteenth century, uh, twenty and twenty two Hancock Street, uh, respectively, twenty being the Charles Sumner House, and obviously tremendous historical significance, um, and so, uh, I don't personally feel that notwithstanding the building's otherwise, uh, uh, matching features and the intention to, to match it further still, uh, that that would require us to match um, what is otherwise frankly, a, a, a bit of a historical anachronism on the, on, uh, the neighboring building, I think in general, that's kind of what we most want to avoid is something that was never on the building to begin with. If we had evidence, um, that there was, uh, a six over six pattern on this building at one point for some significant period of its, of its life, and certainly if, if that had been the case originally, uh, that would be another matter, I think we can be confident, given what we know about the architectural history, that it would not have been six over six originally, and I think we can be pretty confident, uh, that they, it would have been two over two. And, uh, so I'm, I'm, uh, quite sympathetic to Rochelle and the Civic Association's, uh, comment in that regard. Anyone else? Okay, um, let's see, uh, does anyone dissent from that particular notion? Um, okay, and, and let's see, in terms of the other added features, the intercom panel is one uh, that is very much in a, 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 a design that has been approved in the past, it's on the sort of approved list, right, Nick?
It's actually our preferred, uh, uh, intercom system, yeah.
Right, uh, and it's got the brass plate, um, one question, uh, Tim, uh, abstracted for a moment from the light pattern on the windows, are, are you proposing insulated glass?
Low E glass, um, not ins- insulated, no low E coating.
Insulated, yes, low E, no.
No.
Okay, right, so, uh, okay, so, um, and, uh, do we have, well, okay, we, we, um, yeah, okay, so, let's see, light fixture, I'm okay with that. Um, any, any other views on that? Door hardware looks good, numbers look good.
Excellent.
The paint colors, I think are fine. Okay, um.
All right, so quick question, Nick, how's staff feeling about this?
Uh, uh, staff feels exactly his, uh, the commission feels about everything on this particular project, so I think I'm okay with everything thus far. Um, I think the windows, in terms of the, um, the design of the grid pattern, um, they could be two over two, but they could also probably be one over one. Um, so, um, I'm, I'm fine with two over two, um, so, yeah.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have an opinion about this? Okay, I mean, I motion to approve what's submitted.
Well, hold on, we, we're, we're proposing to, uh, that the windows would need to be two over two rather than what's proposed.
We're fine with two over two, to be honest, um, the idea of, we went six over six because we're managing what was, what was at twenty five, as we discussed, and honestly, I think twenty five, uh, the windows there do not appear to be original either, so if there's some um, some justification, we'll go on with two over two, which you've, you've indicated, that seems, that's fine with us.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that, Commissioner Allen, would you accept a friendly amendment to, to, uh, add a proviso that windows be, uh, in a two over two configuration?
Yes, with the proviso, windows be over two over two.
Okay, and, uh, uh, since they're insulated glass, dark spacer bar, no, no low E glass?
Yes, oh, he already said that, he already, he already.
He said that, but I just want to make sure it's in the motion, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, do I hear a second to the amended motion?
Second.
Thank you, uh, any further discussion on the motion, are we clear what we're voting on? Okay, we'll vote, Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Feingold?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson, sorry, Commissioner Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele?
Aye.
Okay, other, the revised, uh, uh, application is, uh, approved, thank you very much, Tim, for your, uh, for coming in, you'll get a letter from Nick uh, with, uh, determination, and, uh, we're gonna need to see, uh, a cut sheet for the revised windows, just FYI.
Okay.
Uh, we didn't include that in the motion, but, uh, we'll just want to, we want to get a final design, so we've got it in the file. Uh, okay, moving on to twenty nine. So this is the building, just orient us, just immediately to the left, to the one that we've just discussed, right?
That, exactly, correct, neighboring, uh, neighboring twenty seven. Um, again, twenty nine Hancock, um, we're doing rehabilitation and renovation, um, in this building, um, to create ten for sale dwelling units, and the rehabilitation, um, you want to all right, I'll jump to the, the next slide, you can see the context, um, or this one, uh, twenty nine in the center there, twenty seven on the right, which we just discussed, and thirty three, which is on the left side of twenty nine Hancock Street there. Um, and then our next slide is our existing elevations, this returns, uh, major facade with a return there. Um, our next slide is the proposed work, so the, um, the real, the rehabilitation includes, um, the facade restoration again here, um, which is patching and repairing, uh, these existing cast stone lentils, repointing the entire facade, um, and that return there, the major facade in the return. Um, we're replacing existing windows again on, on his, on Hancock Street, on all floors with the JB Sash JB Proper Bostonian Wood Windows. Um, we go to the next, uh, next slide, goes in a little more detail at the entrances. Uh, twenty nine Hancock, we have two entrances to the building here, this is our, we consider our primary entrance, uh, which is the closest to twenty seven, which is just to the right of this entrance here. And we're proposing that they're patching and repairing uh, the existing stone, um, patching and repairing the trim around the, the entry door, replacing the exterior surface mounted light, um, adding a buzzer, um, replacing the, uh, deadbolt and um, signage, um, the house numbers, and what we're listing is, uh, the painting for the uh, the coating here was the white all HC sixty nine, which is going to be at the entrance. Um, the black HC, HC one ninety, we're doing, um, we're scraping and repainting all of the, the escapes, um, and then if you go to our sorry, next slide is our second entrance into twenty nine, which is just to the left of the primary entrance. Uh, the first floor of this unit, um, the first floor units here, with two units on this floor, we're trying to make, we're make, um, providing and making them accessible, um, handicap accessible, so we're trying, we're creating an accessible entrance, uh, threshold for this entrance, um, and that's going to require us to drop this, this granite stoop down, um, six inches. Um, the original intent was to replace this door, and we're now deciding to go, instead of replacing the door, to keep the door, drop the door down, and add trim to the top of the door, um, to pick up that's, uh, that six inch, uh, that six inch differential, um, which based on our dropping of this sill. Uh, same door hardware that's going on this primary, on this secondary door, um, all unlacquered brass, and I think we have one more slide, which is our windows, uh, the window replacements, again, all the windows on the, on the first, all the windows on Hancock Street will be replaced with the JB Sash JB Bostonian.
And just for clarity here, since, um, to tell us the, the light pattern that you're proposing?
This was, um, so if you go back to the, the elevation, of course, um.
I think I saw a few different.
Yes, yeah.
And is that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. So this was a, a sorry, two over one. Sorry, two over two, two over two here.
And the third floor and fourth floor, is that just an artifact of the rendering, because it looks like the, it does look like two over one on?
Yeah, there's a line, yeah, I'm sorry, we should have, there's a line, it's, um, I think we tried to to lighten this up, there should be two over two.
Okay, throughout, yeah.
Throughout.
Okay. Uh, and then there is the cornice, you're, you're going to scrape and paint, and you're proposing to, to, to paint that black, is that right?
That, that's, that's what we originally proposed, I think that's a, we're now considering going with the HC sixty nine with that cornice, but we're open to another color, if there was one that's.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a interesting and important feature that we're going to want to talk about a little more, uh, but for the moment, uh, and, uh, what if anything happens to the, oh, yeah, the fire balconies, you're not removing them, you're just, uh?
Scraping and repainting those with the HD, um, the black.
Right.
HC one ninety.
Okay. Um. You're not able to get rid of those?
The balconies?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Um. Let's see, anything else? Okay, is, is, is that pretty much it?
Yes.
Great, okay, thank you, uh, clarifying questions from the commission before we take public comment? Okay, hearing none. Uh, let's go ahead and take public comment, if you want to be heard on the record, please raise your hand in the Zoom, using the button at the bottom, and uh, Nick will, I'll meet you.
Yeah. Um, Mark, just before I do, just make a note, when you discuss the masonry, to talk about the differences in the masonry, um, on the front facade because of the alteration in the building in the early twentieth century.
Yes.
So just make a note of that, just to discuss, um, okay, uh, first up we have, um, is, uh, we'll go to Christina, Christina, go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Christina Madik, and I represent Homes on Hancock, and I just want to, uh, voice our support for this proposal, thank you.
Thank you, Christina. All right, and then next up we have is Rochelle, Rochelle, go ahead.
Uh, Beacon Hill Civic Association, while guideline A seven prohibits changes to existing door openings, we do not oppose lowering and resetting the thresholds to meet ADA compliance, as the historic fabric is not being destroyed and can later be returned to its historic appearance, and the door itself is not historic. Assuming the windows are documented as nonhistoric or beyond repair, we do not oppose replacing the windows with the JB Sash Proper Bostonian product, known to meet guideline D six for insulated glass, and agree two over two is a more appropriate configuration, unlike the existing one over one, we oppose painting the cornice black as it does not satisfy guideline G one for historically appropriate paint color, and the same or similar brown color as masonry would be historically appropriate, as these tenement building cornices were meant to appear sculpted wood or stone while actually being made of stamped metal, end of comment.
Thank you, Rochelle, um, Mark, not seeing any other public comments, we can send it back to you.
Okay, thank you, so we'll close public comment, yeah, this is a, a very, very interesting building, um, maybe more so than it might look like at first blush, uh, but if you look closely, you see this is a very early building, a federal period building, it's coarse brick and Flemish bond, um, that, uh, evidently was altered dramatically, probably around the turn of the twentieth century, to re-envision it as a tenement apartment building, uh, when we can probably imagine that, uh, an additional story at least was added, and this, uh, rather elaborate, interesting cornice. It also has, uh, and the analogy here would be something like Two Chestnut or Fifty Seven Mount Vernon, uh, roughly eight or ten foot section that was probably added to the left, so you can sort of see that original three bay house peeking out from under this much larger facade, you can see the difference in the color there, the darker brick to the left, which is in common bond rather than Flemish bond. Uh, yeah, there's a nice, nice outline, there's your original building below and to the right of where uh, Nick is indicating there, and then everything above and to the left of that is likely uh, the later, uh, early twentieth century addition, probably to close the gap between what, uh, was a later uh, building added, this is exactly what happened to Two Chestnut and, uh, Fifty Seven Mount Vernon, to close the gap with that building that had since, uh, been built next door. Um, so, uh, I think that's important to how we think about, uh, both the cornice and the windows, because um, clearly, the expression of this building, while it's, it's early federal period DNA is um, clearly, the expression of this building, while it's it's early federal period DNA is observable, if you look closely, it clearly reads as, again, consistent with our guidelines, this later uh renovation, the style of its later renovation, which is this uh turn of the twentieth century uh tenement apartment building and so forth. So I think um two over two windows are appropriate for that period, and since the building really does emphatically reflect that style rather than the original, uh, that's a two over two be most appropriate. And then with respect to the cornice, I think uh I'm uh likewise sympathetic, I think, to the comment, Rochelle's comment from the Civic Association, that notwithstanding the fact that you have black cornices in the two neighboring buildings, and certainly appreciate, you know, wanting to, you know, have a nod of consistency there. Uh, I think we need uh a color that would be historically and architecturally appropriate for that um later addition, and it's been suggested something that uh matches uh the masonry or um, perhaps if it was white originally, do we, Tim, do you have any sense? Uh, I don't know if you've been able to get all the way up there, but of uh what's on there now color-wise, or what was on there and may have flaked off?
Yeah, it's it's hard, we've been on the roof of uh of both of these buildings, but it's it's hard to see what um, do you get clear view, and even on the fifth floor, even looking up from these um of uh twenty-nine, it's it's hard to to identify what the original color was. Uh, it does have a masonry um sort of reddish browns tint to them, it's it's body, um, but is cleared it was some sort of uh reddish brown color that was there originally.
Yeah, there's a a really nice run of these buildings at the far end of Philip Street where it intersects West Cedar on on both sides, West Cedar and Phillips, uh, many of which still have that uh similar kind of cornice, and there's not an obvious um, you know, a unitary uh choice in terms of the colors, because of course, I'm sure they've been modified over time, but particularly if we think there's evidence that at at some point it had something more like a masonry color, that would be uh, I think, a good place uh to start, uh, and as as firm a conjecture as we can make as any failing any direct evidence uh from paint analysis and so forth. Um, let's see, Nick, what else did we want to talk about with respect to the masonry, just to remind me again?
Um, I, the other thing we just want to talk about is the the lowering of the, sorry, did we, I don't know, the lowering of the threshold for the the door on the left side, right?
Oh, uh, okay, right, so so uh, yeah, I I again, I appreciate Rochelle's comments from the Civic Association. This is uh, you know, we do have a guideline about masonry openings. I'm not sure it uh it doesn't define exactly um, you know, the full range of contexts in which it's meant to be applied, but um, it's it's worth noting here. Um, you know, this is a a marginal enlargement, but I think um, if nothing else, uh, this is uh you know, quite modest and is as Rochelle pointed out, completely reversible, doesn't destroy any historic fabric, the door's not original uh and so forth, and you're going to keep the actual uh, um, you're just going to literally lower it?
Right.
Yeah, so you're not even removing that stoop or whatever.
We have to add a trim uh in order, we're lowering it, and then we'll add some sort of trim to the mask to cover up that six inch, that that the difference.
Uh, okay, and what will that be made out of?
It will be a wood trim, similar to what's there now.
Okay. Um, and uh, let's see, what else? And you're not affecting the sidewalk at all? You're just literally doing this all within the envelope of that entry?
Correct, great, just at the granite, the existing granite stoop there.
Okay, um, I think I'm fine with that for all the reasons that Rochelle nicely articulated. Um, anyone else have a view about that or uh a more specific view about the paint color for the cornice? Okay, uh, let me ask it in the affirmative, if uh, I think I I would uh I think I'm going to suggest uh that we um ask that the cornice be repainted in a in a similar uh color uh to match or or reflect uh the masonry with the final color to be uh the decision on the final color and a sample uh with staff? Is everyone okay with that?
That makes perfect sense.
Because we don't have, because we haven't asked them to do this yet, we don't have an actual color to use, so I think uh we know what we want, I think. Uh, and obviously, Nick is uh can can just uh uh work with them to find a suitable color. Okay, very good. Um, anything else?
Mark, you wanted it to be like in a, what was the like the the rough idea of the shade, or are we just giving all of the decision-making to me?
Uh, I think, yeah, sorry, the guidance would be, um, as as Rochelle, I think nicely articulated, that it would be taking as cues uh what's there now and uh that the objective would be to match or uh be harmonious with the the uh uh similar in tone to the to the to the masonry.
Nice.
So a a like a brick-like color or something to that effect. Um, okay, any other, anything else, any concerns, questions about uh any of the other details? Again, the windows will be two over two, just to clarify.
Yes.
There was a little issue with the drawing, but that was intended to ship reflect two over two. Okay, uh, I think with that, um, I will move as follows, that uh, that the application be uh approved with the following proviso, that the uh color of the of the repainting of the cornice uh be revised to reflect uh a color consistent with uh the existing color uh and specifically uh reflective of uh to match or at least harmonize with, uh be consistent with the masonry, with the final color uh and a sample approved in advance or a chip approved in advance delegated to staff.
Agreed.
Okay, is that a second?
Yeah, a second, yeah.
Okay, have I have I missed anything, Nick? Anything else? Uh, I'll just add, go ahead, Nick, sorry.
Sorry, just revised drawings for the left side door, because they said they were going to add a piece of trim to the top, so we just like some revised drawings there.
Oh, right, and uh with with the the final design, revised drawings for the final design of the left side door, submitted to staff in advance of construction. Can I just get a uh uh, thank you very much, Commissioner Allen. Okay, uh, with that revised motion, we will uh vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Feingold.
Aye.
Mr. Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much, Tim, appreciate all your work on this. Uh, I know this has been a long time coming. I will just say uh for the record, as I understand it, this is uh the now uh final resolution of the uh uh affordable housing component of the large development of the Archer and Donahue Buildings that were sold from uh uh Suffolk University now several years ago and redeveloped, and uh it sounds like uh and we heard some testimony from uh the neighbors that this uh has been uh a long time coming, a lot of effort, a lot of input from the community, and uh I think it looks like uh uh quite a successful resolution of this important issue to bring more affordable housing to Beacon Hill, so thank you for your work on this and your sensitivity uh to the uh requirements of the historic district. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. You'll get a letter from uh Nick with the particulars. Any questions follow with him. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, and thanks, Suni, we appreciate your uh contacting us.
Thank you. Okay, uh administrative review, any uh comments, questions, concerns, or recusals on any of the administrative items?
No.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to approve them?
You have to go to the public.
Yep. I think I've made it one month, literally once, I have not forgotten. I uh, thank you, Commissioner Allen, as 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 always. Um, what would we do without you? Uh, does anyone uh have a public comment they want to make, if anyone's even left? Um, uh, going once, public comment. Okay, hearing none, closed public comment. Uh, does anyone want to now want to make a motion, a proper motion for approval?
I have motion to approve.
Okay, uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
It will vote Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Feingold.
Aye.
Mr. Kiefer votes aye, Commissioner Steele.
Aye.
Great, uh administrative items are approved.
Great. Just uh staff updates, that's it.
Staff updates, please, Nick, go ahead.
Um, awesome, so uh just a friendly reminder to um if you're going to be um missing a hearing or you can't attend, to just let me know as soon as possible. Everyone's usually pretty great with it, but um, we're um just tracking attendance, um, so if you have to call out, there's no problem there, just let me know ahead of time, so um, just a reminder so that I can invite your alternate. Um, and then the uh second thing is that um I will be attending Hillfest. Um, I think I saw, is Patricia still here? Um, so um, I'll be tabling there. If any of the commissioners would like to table with me, uh, just shoot me a note. Um, just gonna have a couple uh items uh to kind of, maybe some giveaways, um, some um friendly maps to show people um the new extension of the district, and of course, the guidelines and maybe some uh books about the history of Beacon Hill, just to talk to the community, um, get the community um excited about what we do and um make us not so scary by um showing up to these uh community events and saying that we're real people, um, and we're your neighbors, and we're here to help, not hinder, so. Um, so that's it, yeah, that's all I have for um.
You know, I've got to be blind. How scary can we possibly be?
Right. I don't know, by some of the phone calls.
Yeah, yeah. Right, uh, well, yeah, no, it's a fun event, encourage everyone to come out. Uh, I still don't know if I I I, there's a chance I may be out of town. If I'm not out of town, I will certainly be there, and I will be, uh, the tenant plan is to do as I usually do, uh, a an abbreviated architectural walking tour, just FYI
All fun.
as part of Hillte- Hillfest. Um, and uh we'll just, we'll make a lap around up Mount Vernon and back down Chestnut, but there's a a lot to talk about just in that uh few blocks, uh, so I hope to see you all there. Um, uh, but I don't know yet if I'm going to be here, but if I am, we'll do that, so something to look forward to.
Awesome. That's all I have.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I want to adjourn.
Okay, do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you all very much. Happy rest of summer.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye bye.
Bye. Bye.